December sixteenth. Tonight's meeting is broadcast live on Selco Channels twenty-nine and three-twenty-nine, and it's streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. I'd like to thank SMC Executive Director Mark Sauer, as well as Shrewsbury Public Schools IT Director Brian LaRue, who help with all of our meetings. First is public participation. No one has asked to address the committee this evening, but if anybody wishes to do so in the future, please email us at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.ma.us. We'd be happy to have you join us by telephone. Is there anything this evening for members' reports? Nothing? Okay. Next is superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. First off, I want to commend the Shrewsbury High School students who participated in the Theater Department's Fall Play this year. These students performed "Our Place," which was set on a dock at a lake. It was sort of five different stories. Lent itself to a creative way to do socially-distanced acting with masks on, so they followed all of the safety precautions and still were able to film a really wonderful piece of drama that, under the direction of Mr. Michael Lopimardo. And they were able to share that via video for a limited time, and I had the opportunity to watch it this past weekend, and it was outstanding as usual. So congratulations to our Theater Department, to those students, and to Mr. Lopimardo. And thank you to the television studio students for helping us with filming it. I also just want to let the community know that as far as the work we're doing for the committee to study the high school mascot, there were over a hundred and thirty applications. I have finished reviewing them, and the quality of them compelled me to actually expand the number of slots. I had checked this with Ms. Fritz first. We're actually going to have eight slots each for students, faculty, staff, and administration, parents, and alumni. So it'll be a total of thirty-two people. It'll be a large committee, but just given the number of people who are interested and to have a variety of folks with different backgrounds among all those groups, we thought that was important. We are waiting on one person to respond to my invitation, and then I'm hoping that by the end of the week, certainly, I'll be able to communicate out to those who are not selected and people who are interested but not selected will have an opportunity to send feedback directly to the study group itself. They'll be doing some background research over the rest of December. They'll begin meeting in January, and Mr. Mizilow and I have worked out a schedule to be able to bring a recommendation to the school committee in March. So that process is moving forward, and again, we appreciate the interest in it. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sauer. Our first-time scheduled appointment this evening will be an update on the school opening from Dr. Sauer.
Thank you again, Ms. Fritz. Want to start again with our key messages about the health and well-being of our students and our families and our staff. Remains our first priority that we've continued to focus on creating a safe school environment for our students that prioritizes everyone's well-being, but also enables high levels of learning for all, in that, to emphasize again, we're operating based on public health guidelines from public health authorities and medical experts, and looking at the data as it's evolving, both here and across the state. I do want to share with the community tonight, and this is very new news, that we just spent time this afternoon, mid-afternoon, we have had twenty cases this week to date. We now have one hundred and thirty-seven cumulative cases in our school district in the hybrid model. And today, we have the first case that, based on the contact tracing that we're doing, is a possible school exposure. Again, it'd be a single case where two individuals, right now, we're investigating further whether or not that was a potential in-school transmission. As a result of that, not only did our team communicate directly with the local Central Massachusetts Alliance Public Health Authority, with whom we work directly, but also with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. As a result of that, the public health authorities made the determination that it would be helpful to investigate further by providing their mobile testing unit to come out to the school. I'm not going to say the school, because we are in the process of communicating with that school community, and that will be happening shortly after, during the course of this evening. But what will happen, based on the public health authority's determination, is that a segment of students and cohort who were in school at the time that this was a suspected potential transmission, will be able to be tested by the remote mobile testing unit. And then, the class itself, all of the cohorts in that class will go remote. Tomorrow's going to be, I should have announced during superintendent's report, tomorrow's going to be a snow day. And then Friday through next Wednesday, that single classroom will be learning remotely. We confirmed with those public health authorities that it was not necessary to have anyone else in the school and go remote at this time, based on the facts of the case and the evidence that we have. And in this case, it really is out of the proverbial abundance of caution that we're going to keep that one classroom out of school through the break. And we expect that that mobile testing will likely take place during the first part of next week. You know, we've said all along that as we have information, we're going to be very transparent about it, and that's why I'm sharing this with the community this evening. And we'll be sharing that information directly with the school, first of all, the classroom and those families first, then the school community where it's affected. And then after that, I'll communicate out to the larger district, just so they know, because obviously this news will travel anyways. We want to make sure that people all have the same information. So that's important to note, and again, it's based on our continuous work in every single case to do rigorous contact tracing where that is warranted. As I mentioned at our meeting two weeks ago, you know, we're seeing lots of cases where the individual has not been in school for some period of time, typically because they've been quarantining at home because of an outside exposure. You know, an example of that would be a student who's been quarantining because a parent was, had an exposure and contacted the virus, contracted the virus rather during, from work, for example. Students have been home quarantining, when they're tested, they're positive, but they have not been in the school setting any time during their period when they'd be infectious. Other times, it's been because of the alternating nature of the schedule. And we continue to do, again, rigorous contact tracing, and so today, because some of the issues around this potential, one case today caused a higher level of questioning, therefore the further consultation with the State Department of Public Health and the approach we're going to take. So I just want to make sure people understand that. Last week, you know, we also now have seven total cases in the remote program. We had none so far this week, but last week, we had four cases in the remote program as well. The next slide. Here we go. So this, just want to remind people again that we have the data dashboard that we're publishing every Monday. You can see the data story here is the same as we're seeing all over the state, is that as we approached and then went past post-Thanksgiving, the number of cases in the community has risen. We've had two weeks back-to-back where there have been thirty-three total cases, and again, twenty so far this week since this past Sunday, where we had a couple of smaller-case weeks prior to that. So that's something, obviously, that we continue to pay close attention to. The next slide, this is what we've been looking at from Johns Hopkins every week when we present, and Massachusetts did cross the five percent threshold. You know, not much over it, but a titch over five percent, at five point six-six percent, up from a little under four percent two weeks ago. And the, you know, again, it's concerning, because that's a number where, you know, public health authorities say, community should pay more attention. And obviously, I'm sure this is a statistic that Governor Baker was paying attention to when he did his most recent move backwards in terms of the phased reopening of the state. The next graph shows for Shrewsbury, based on the weekly state public health report, which comes out on Thursday, so this is data from last Thursday, that's the most recent we have, is that Shrewsbury's positivity rate, also similar to the state's, had pushed a bit over five percent to five point three-nine percent. That's, again, overall, the total community, based on number of tests given and number of tests that were positive. So again, not trending in the right direction. This next slide just reminds people that we did, a week ago, as most people know, Shrewsbury moved into the red category in terms of the state's rating system. That's because averaging greater than ten cases per hundred thousand and having a positivity rate of greater than five percent for a community of our size. You can see that the cases per hundred thousand went up from twenty-six point nine to thirty-seven point nine eight, and then the positivity rate, because it tripped over five percent, moved the community from yellow to red. Just reminding people again, and this is just a helpful visual that talks about, you know, studies that have shown what mitigates the spread in schools, and where you have a variety of factors in place, it mitigates those things. You know, we continue to be in the furthest-left category in the bottom section, where we're implementing all five key mitigation strategies. So that's helping us, and that's why we believe, given the prevalence of cases in the community, we have seen cases not occurring within the schools, with perhaps our first one identified today, out of all the cases that have been identified. In terms of the, you know, number of cases, we're sort of in that moderate-risk category now in the community, and just a titch over five percent, again, for the risk of transmission moves it from that green section to the yellow section as well. So that's something, again, that we are paying close attention to. But most importantly, we're looking at what's happening within schools. I want to remind everyone again of the updated state guidance that came out in early November that indicates that the expectation from the state Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, State Department of Public Health, the COVID Command Center, is that you're looking at whether transmission's happening in schools, which is defined as the spread of the virus between people during interactions in a school setting. And again, up until today, we've had no evidence of that, despite rigorous contact tracing. But today, we may have one case. We're going to look more to see if there's any other cases that could be asymptomatic that would be associated with that situation. The next slide recommends, again, based on the color coding, that when schools move into the red zone, that they be in a hybrid model. That's the model that we're already in. You know, we know that there are people who are requesting us that we, to go full in school in recent weeks, because we were not yet in red. And one of the messages we've been sending is that, given the way the cases were trending, it certainly didn't make sense to me to prematurely move into, and not that we can flip a switch and get back to full school very easily anyways, just given the logistics of that. But now that we are in the red zone, we're matching our model to what the expectation is, and obviously continuing to pay close attention to our high-needs students as well, those students with significant special needs, who really, it's so important for them to get in-person learning, it's most important for them, I should say. So again, we're looking carefully at this. We're consulting with public health authorities. We had a conversation and a meeting with the public health authorities when we had the message that we were going to be moving into the red. And again, the main thing we're looking at is whether or not there's any significant transmission happening in schools. And so, based on what we saw today, we're taking further steps, as a result, in a targeted way, based on what the authorities are saying we should be doing. And so, the final two slides here, just want to reiterate, we're continuing to try to maintain stability. Our current hybrid program, you know, minimizes the amount of close contacts because of the quarantining and six-foot distancing, or not needing to quarantine, rather, and the alternating schedule that we have. We know that some have moved to full remote instruction because of staffing shortages, and that's something that we continue to be concerned about, because if staff are quarantined because of contacts outside of school, it limits the ability for us to have an environment that we need with staff in school. So far, we've been okay, but we've been, you know, moving in the wrong direction, just because of the amount of cases in the general community and state. Because these rates are concerning, we're paying, again, very close attention. And as I put in bold there, we continue to follow the guidance from public health and medical experts in terms of what the approaches we're taking. And as I mentioned, again, one possible case of in-school transmission between two individuals is under investigation, and that classroom will be remote from now until the December And this is the same slide I shared two weeks ago, and I just want to reiterate again that we've been challenged like we've never been before in our careers as educators. We know it's challenging for families. I'm certainly proud of the way that people have adapted, but I continue to be concerned about the level of effort required to do this work and sustain it over time, which is why we have to continue to focus on what the priorities are, be realistic about what our limits are, and obviously, continue to seek ways to support students and staff and families. Some of this, it's not the only reason, that's part of the reason that I decided that tomorrow would be a traditional snow day, where there's no requirements of students to do anything other than, you know, potentially sleep late and play a game that's not on a screen, perhaps, and, you know, help their family shovel out and their neighbors, but, you know, have a more traditional day, away from the constant screen time and remote learning that have been happening on the days that they're home. And also, frankly, to give our staff a break, because they deserve it. They've been grinding this out for a long time, and hopefully, they can unplug a little bit and take a breath, and certainly, families as well, hopefully, where that's possible. We do have, right now, because of the way our schedule, our calendar works, you know, we're only expected, we're expected to get out on June sixteenth, this would push it to June seventeenth. But certainly, another factor in my thinking was that the prospect of a good-weather day, hopefully not too hot in mid-June, where who knows, depending on how the continued vaccine rollout goes and how things evolve over the course of the next few months, it could be a higher level of in-school, in-person learning at that time, and that would be a better day than a day now, where a lot of kids are remote. So, you know, we've got a couple of days before we'd flip into that next week. There still is the possibility, depending on how the weather evolves this winter, that we would do some remote learning days in lieu of snow days. But just given the timing, felt, based on the advice of our leadership team, and just given the circumstances, that it made the most sense to have a traditional snow day. And so that was the decision that was made, and I'm happy to answer any questions or hear any comments about the information I've provided in this update this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sauer. Any questions or comments? Lindsay.
Yeah, I want to thank you, Dr. Sauer, for the consistent updates for the community, and I think there's a couple of key things here. I continue to feel confident in our decision to offer our hybrid in-person learning, even though community cases are rising. I think about three weeks of in-person summer learning, our two weeks of professional development where people are in the building, and now thirteen weeks of school in the building. And while I am dismayed, as any parent would be, to know that there is a possibility that's something we're exploring in the school setting, I still think we have, the lack of numbers to this date tell us that we're getting many, many things right, even amongst a lot of uncertainty. That being said, I wonder if you could talk a little bit more about, sort of, two things. Now that we're investigating, and maybe we could just share a little more, what that looks like? You mentioned at one point, we're investigating, but then it's also the Department of Public Health and the collaborative, kind of how that relationship works, and what families could expect to hear. I'm thinking both parents might be listening to this, saying, checking their email and hitting refresh a lot. And some might get an announcement, but what would be the announcement to the rest of the district? And the other thought in the back of my head, Dr. Sauer, is, as we think about a school community where some students need to go remote for a time being to keep everybody safe, how then does testing work at a school site when the kids themselves aren't there? And what we're thinking for what mobile test? And I recognize this is like a rapidly developing situation in the last couple hours.
Right, right. And so, no, and so I'll take the second question first, because that the answer is, we don't know yet exactly where it would happen, that the Department of Public Health works with a vendor who'll be providing the testing, and that vendor's going to be contacting our Director of School Nursing, Noah Freeman, directly, and hadn't, as of the time I came down to this meeting, that hadn't happened yet. We expect it will happen sometime early next week, whether that would happen at the school site or at another site we're not sure about. You know, we're going to encourage those students to be tested. We can't force families, they will have to give their permission for that to happen, of course. We can, under public health guidance and regulations, we can require any staff who need to be tested to be tested, and I'm sure they would be cooperative with that anyways. So, you know, we're not exactly sure how that's going to work, but what I can tell you is that the deployment of this mobile testing unit is very, they have a very strict set of criteria. We had actually inquired about it in another situation, which we did not believe we saw any evidence of, but there was some, you know, potential commonality of same physical space, although not nearly close enough to be a close contact. And we just made the inquiry to say, okay, what, is this a situation you would come out and just for, out of caution? And they said, no, that would not even come close to qualifying. This case today, although, again, it's more of out of caution, because there is no, we don't know for sure what the origin of this transmission is, but it's ruling other things out, because typically with the contact tracing, you go to your first question, the contact tracing really focuses on, you know, is there anyone who is a close contact, anyone who's also been recently been a case, who might have been in contact or in proximity, using the, you know, fifteen minutes for, within six feet or more? And that's the situation where, you know, to date, no close contacts have tested positively any time we've identified a close contact, and we have not seen, up until this point, a situation where there would have been some kind of proximity, where we would say, well, that may, if there's not other obvious sources outside of school, it leads you want to believe that it could be an in-school transmission. Again, we don't have confirmation of that by any means. So the idea is that by then testing other individuals who would have been in the same space, even though they're not technically close contacts, we can be hopefully reassured that we're not seeing some larger amount of spread. You know, there's no evidence of any spread. It's really about an in-school, single case of potential transmission. We'll probably never be able to confirm whether it was or not, but if there's other cases from folks with that, from that environment, then obviously, that would be of concern. It would have to look and see what, of course, we're coming up on the break, so that will help in terms of the timing, but that's the situation. I do expect that a communication will probably be going out, probably within the next half hour. You know, again, first to the classroom, the parents of the class that will be going remote, then to that school community, and then we'll follow that up with sending a message out to the whole district after that.
Thank you, Jason.
I understand that yesterday, the State's Board of Elementary and Secondary Education took a vote pertaining to hybrid learning. I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit about that vote, how that pertains to our district and our approach?
Sure. I'm aware of the vote. I haven't seen an official communication of any specifics yet, so I don't have a lot of detail on it, but in terms of the, my understanding of what the board voted, is that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the recommendation of Commissioner O'Reilly, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education did approve what they would term an emergency regulation, having to do with their ability to dictate the amount of time, time and learning, you know, that students have, which is, you know, essentially a seat time. There's regulations that have always been in effect, you know, pre-COVID, around the number of days you have to go to school, is a minimum of one eighty of days in a session, regardless of how many are half-days or full-days. You have to have a certain number of hours, nine hundred hours of instruction for elementary students and nine hundred and ninety hours for middle and high school students. And so we have to comply with those in terms of our scheduling and whatnot. They're extending this regulation now to indicate how much time, whether a district's in a hybrid schedule or in an all-remote schedule, how much live synchronous time students have with being, interacting with the school, some educator or school personnel, as opposed to asynchronous learning. And I believe they set that at thirty-five hours over a ten-day, two-week period, on average, across all levels. So it's a little bit complicated in the way that they're, and that's why I want to understand the details a little bit better. And then, if you're in an all-remote district, my understanding, it's an average of forty hours of synchronous learning, live, over a two-week span. So I know Ms. Clodder will be looking at, you know, we submitted some information to the state. Again, transparency, we have an initial communication from the state that our current program does not meet that standard, and they're expecting sometime in mid-January that we will meet that standard. Until we understand it a little bit better, I'm not sure exactly what that means for us, and obviously, that's something we'll be looking at carefully, once we get that official communication and we're able to sort of dissect what it means and how we might address that, and, you know, we will move forward in the way we think makes the most sense at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sauer, for these reports. I know the community, and Lindsay mentioned it, this is something that they're, it's getting a lot of traction. They feel there's a lot of transparency and very appreciative of this information coming out every two weeks, so thank you for that. And Ms. Freeman, and the amount of work that she's doing behind the scenes, helping with all of this, it's not an easy task on top of everything else that's going on. So thank you.
Yeah, and I just, let me just please close, you know, I should have mentioned it earlier. I mean, obviously, it was, it's been reassuring each week to say, you know, we're not seeing any evidence of in-school transmission, and so no one likes to hear, well, gee, we might have a case of in-school transmission. I also recognize that with the number of cases rising, and this is human nature, that there were people, you know, within the school community, whether those are parents, whether those are staff members, saying, are you really sure there's no in-school transmission? And, you know, we tried to provide some statistics at the last meeting to kind of show that, why we can really say with a lot of reassurance that there isn't, and that we are communicating and checking, of course, with the public health experts when there are cases that may have any questions with them. And it's being done in a very thorough way, and I think a very transparent way, as best we can. Of course, there's levels of detail that we can't share, because there'd be levels of details that, you know, could inadvertently identify individuals who deserve to maintain their confidentiality around their health situation. You know, my hope would be that people would judge the school district on the work that we've continued to do, to try to be transparent and build trust, and certainly, but understand that as people's anxiety might be rising, that they may become more skeptical. And that's, again, it's a human nature response when people are worried and concerned. And this is going to ratchet that up a bit, there's no question about that. And again, for me, you know, again, that, you know, there was nothing more important than the health and the well-being of our students and our staff in our school buildings, and obviously, our families who are concerned about, you know, if something were coming back and forth. I think one of the things that is reassuring, I heard it again from some medical experts who were testifying yesterday, actually, to the State Board of Education, talking about not seeing the kind of spread that's happening, where, you know, kids who might be asymptomatic bringing the virus home and infecting their families. Across the state, they are not seeing that. And if there was lots of in-school transmission, that would be a natural thing, that families would start getting infected when the student brings it home. Not seeing high numbers of staff being, you know, infected due to exposure to students. Not seeing students, and again, obviously, people can be asymptomatic, and we're never going to know that without a testing regimen, and I wish we had the resources, and I wish there were a situation where we did have a testing regimen that would give people more data about this. And maybe that will be coming, as maybe, hopefully, they develop more affordable and tests that are more widely available. But I do want to recognize that this is an emotional issue, and that different people have different levels of tolerance for, you know, the sense of risk, and that, you know, to me, the best response is to continue to consult with the experts, look at the data of what's happening, and pay close attention and make good decisions if we see data that says we should be concerned, and where we don't see that data, continue with our program and make sure we continue to be vigilant about the mitigation strategies we're putting in place. But again, it's, people have been doing this work for a long time, and people are tired, and it's understandable that people are concerned.
Great, thank you. And we seem to always talk about COVID, so the next agenda item is a really good news story. We're going to have an update on the Beal School Construction Project, and tonight, Katie Crockett from LPA will be joining us, as well as Walter Hartley from PMA Consultants. I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Fritz. So, part of the construction project has been pretty much a monthly flyover, drone flyover, if you will, of the construction progress, and these have been posted on the Beal Elementary School Construction Project website. We thought this was an opportune time this evening for the school committee and the community to see an update on the construction project, which will be followed up, of course, by an update on redistricting. So at this point, I will turn it right over to Katie Crockett, President of Lamro Pagano Associates. We have a video flyover that she's going to help narrate, and then, obviously, answer any questions that the committee might have.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. It is definitely a good news story, the status of the Beal Elementary School. I know Walter Hartley from PMA and the team at Fontaine Brothers would back me up in saying that. As of this point, we're about sixty percent complete with the school, and we're on target for the substantial completion in May of 2021, and occupancy next fall, followed by some site work cleanup, as we always have on every project. So, especially with all of the concerns in our world today, we're very pleased as a team to say it continues as a collaborative process, and we're seeing excellent progress out there. Aside from what you'll see in the flyover, there are quite a number of finishes going in the building, so it's starting to take shape. You can really start to see what the individual classrooms, common rooms, all of those features that we've talked about over the years. A fabulous views on the amazing site. We're looking forward to it being a really inspirational facility for the town's elementary schools and community members as well. Very pleased to say- to say that we have issued orders for furniture towards that end, and this is a, this is a big deal. And we have a big thank you to the administrators and Principal Chris Girardi for all the efforts that have been put forward in order to look at all of the styles and the types of furniture, to be sure it will suit the school for the long term. This is a tremendous effort under the best of times, and all of these individuals have put in extra effort at our request, so that we can do our best with the results of that. But those have gone out early, and part of that is to prepare as well in case there are any delays for deliveries. We do have equipment and technology coming forward a little bit later in the spring, as we typically do. Additionally, we have been working with some Shrewsbury High School students, and also with volunteer Dr. McGee on the history wall. So we're excited about bringing the World War I bar relief from the existing Beal School over. It will be repaired. It has some dings from, I'm sure, love over the years, that will be repaired, and then it will be reinstalled with that dedication plaque from the building, as well as the new one. And we'll have a history wall that will talk about Beal, the role in the town, the site, and these high school students have been doing some tremendous research. Our firm is going to donate our time towards wrapping all of this up into a graphic, and there will also be a monitor for various videos to be played over the year. So it's an exciting part of the lobby for that school. We'll be able to show you some images of that during the spring, as that comes together further. So with that said, I understand we have a wizard who will start the flyover video, and happy to give you a description of what we see.
Sorry, one minute. We're just, hold on up here.
Brian LaRue has been part of our team in terms of reviewing all things IT and data communications in the Beal Elementary School, which is also a tremendous process in itself. So we appreciate, there are just so many people within the district that participate in making the school a reality. And the more input we get, the better we can make it in the long run. So it's all terrific. There we go. That's looking positive. Okay. So Lake Street is at the top of your screen here. You can see that beautiful green mound with the oak tree in its fabulous position. So we're driving around that back ring road. You can see the academic wings pinwheeling out. It's exciting to think about, see this dirt area in the center of this L. That's going to be a terrific, a community garden area with plantings. This, we're coming around to a view of the recess area and overflow parking. This, again, will, it's just going to be really alive. You can see the ramp up on that lower right that will go to the play structure in that area. And we have all kinds of lines painted in the parking, which are cleverly showing parking spaces as well as games. And then we come around to this side. We have a bit of a hill. We're coming up to the main entrance and the main parking lot. You start to see the lattice structure of the canopy going into the main entry, which is coming together. If you remember, that will have a translucent roofing on it, so it will be a light-covered area as you enter on this east side of the building. And you can see the administration wing is the brick part, and the cafeteria is to the left. And the upper level behind the brick part is where the gym is popping up. As we come around to this side, we see the kindergarten wing, which is the part that extends out to the right. They will have their own fenced play yard for lower-level students. And then the athletic field multipurpose will be in that corner tucked in there as well. You will see that. This is the view kind of as you're entering the site in a car on this side. As you can see, there's a tremendous amount of materials. And whenever we go out there, there are just hundreds of workers. They've really been pushing it. This is the backside where the butterfly garden will be. That large curtain wall is a view into the media center, which goes right back up to the lobby. The art rooms will be on the lower left, and then we have the academic wing. Right at this top is the outdoor classroom next to the beech tree. You can start to see it taking form with a seat wall up there. All of this is 100% handicap accessible throughout the site. We've been able to save a few trees, but we will have a tremendous number that will be planted all along these roads. The view out to the west here, you can see UMass Memorial, as well as the whole city of Worcester. And to the right, which you can't see in this view, you can actually see the gymnasium wall of the Sherwood Middle School. So we're starting to see all of these connections within the school district from this amazing site. The soccer field, you can see off to the upper left here. That is what the view from the cafeteria and the music rooms captures. Just fantastic. So that will be a tremendous connection. This roof view, you get to see all of the mechanical, all of the workings of the building that will function to give it the indoor air quality that we have designed into the building. Here you can see a combination of the metal panel siding, as well as the precast bases. You can see we have precast at the base of every single column for that canopy. So it's very durable, low maintenance, and has been time-tested in Shrewsbury. The center entry will have a wood finish on the metal panel. It's covered now. You can't see it. I'm very excited to have that field off and be able to see the overall effect of that in the end. And this, of course, will be the main entry. I think the corner potties are expected to be gone by next September, I certainly hope. Back again towards the entry. So that canopy will give a nice covered area for people to, as they arrive on the buses. We have electric vehicle connections planned, as well as handicap spaces in that parking lot. And this is the service area, which, as you can see, these decorative retaining walls, they have what's called a board finish on them. This is a high view. The eye view will be more just of that. Again, heavily planted. This building was tough, because it's a 360-degree view of the building, so we tucked the service yard into this corner. Again, this is the play area. I think we have a few stills. This is a nice aerial. This one coming, Lake Street, is at the front here. You can see the new pavement. I hope some of you have been able to drive that and seen the improvements in terms of the height and the curve of it. And this is a final one, looking back. And here you see the cafeteria area and the space out. And the flagpole here is the one that Fontaine has. That's not where its final location will be, but it's a terrific part of the construction site. So with that, thank you, Mr. LaRue. And Walter and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Katie. Any questions or comments as you, to look at that? Go ahead, Lindsay.
I mean, it is so impressive to see. Can I ask a silly question? What's the difference between a-
Oh, no silly question, Lindsay.
Okay. That's not true, but I appreciate it. You have a community garden and a butterfly garden. What's the difference between them, other than butterflies? I mean, why two gardens?
No, that's not a silly question. No, it's a great question. We, when we designed this, we have had the landscape architects look very carefully at how to integrate the building and the site. And we met with, excuse me, the community and school representatives to discuss that. So there are raised bed gardens in the area I pointed out, and those are gardens that the students will actually be using. This building is intended to be open year-round, so we're very excited about that. The butterfly garden is a pollinator garden. It's specifically designed to attract pollinators, and it has trees and a very interesting planting plan, an opportunity for students to walk out of the media center in that art room area I was talking about, and use it as a part of the curriculum. We also have a bio swale drainage system, which is another part of a biodynamic way of handling stormwater, but will be a great opportunity for students. And then we have the two play areas. So along with the pinwheel plan of the building, we have a pinwheel landscape plan that is married to it.
Thank you. Thank you. It's so impressive.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just a comment. It's great to see the progress. I know, agree with what Ms. Fritz said at the beginning. It's nice to pause our COVID conversation, to talk about a really great success story in Beal, and really appreciate all the work that's being done on this, and the thought that's put behind the building, I think, is really awesome. I think that butterfly garden is a tieback to what's at Beal today. And I also like that part of it, kind of what you mentioned about the history wall and the sentiments that's going into, you know, preserving some of the historical elements of Beal, which has been an institution in town for almost 100 years, right? So it's great to see. I could watch those flyovers for the entire duration of the meeting. So I appreciate the update. Thank you very much.
And I think, you know, when you see this, it's so impressive. You know, it seems like it's moved fast now.
Yeah.
And I think for me, being on the building committee, this is like your A-team. You want these people working. You look at that site, and I know we had a meeting last night, and Patrick made a comment, like, it's so neat. It's in a building phase, but like, everything's neat. It's where it should be. And I think it's just such an amazing story during a pandemic, that this is moving, and we're really on time, on budget. Just a really good news story for this community. So I want to thank Katie, Walter, and everybody else with this project. It's really exciting to see. Definitely exciting. Dr. Soria, any comments or questions?
I certainly want to thank Katie Crockett and LPA for the design, as a design firm, Sean Brennan as well, who presented last night. In terms of the quality of the design has been outstanding. The Walter Hartley, PMA Associates, the project management, which they were the same project managers on the Sherwood project and the library, Public Library project, have done excellent work. And really, the contractor has done, as we were just saying, an excellent job. Fontaine Brothers has really been outstanding. This is really a great news story. It's going to be a wonderful space for teaching and learning for decades to come. It's a wonderful investment for our community, and it's very exciting to see it coming to fruition. And we're looking forward to occupying the building next year and having students there. And it's, again, something that we're very proud of, and we're glad it's going so well.
Mr. Collins, any comments before we move on?
No, I don't. I think the presentation and the flyover speaks for itself. And again, just really happy that we got such a positive project on the horizon here, and something to really look forward to.
Great. Thank you.
And I was remiss. I should have mentioned Natalie Gabriel also, who is the other architect who's been working with us on the project. Again, everyone's doing just a terrific job.
Great. Thank you for joining us this evening. We look forward to more updates.
Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.
And we're going to stay on the Beal project. Part of this will be the elementary redistricting project. And back in September of 2019, an ad hoc study group was formed. We've had a little period off during the summer, but we've been meeting quite regularly. And Mr. Collins, along with our, the consultants, will provide an update to the community.
Very good. So why don't I just make a couple of very brief comments, and then turn it over to our consultants, who are the mainstay of the presentation tonight. And as we've previously forwarded to you and to the community, we conducted our request for proposals process, seems like ages ago now, and we selected Apgeo of Boston to help us as consultants in the redistricting process. And there's an enormous amount of technology and data that has been brought to these projects in recent years. And so we're really excited to have them as partners in this project. As you mentioned, we actually started meeting in early 2020. We went on hiatus when COVID hit, and picked back up here in the fall. And there's been an enormous amount of work done with, in between, Apgeo and our redistricting committee, which they will go through. I don't want to steal any of their thunder. I just wanted, at this point, introduce Kate Hickey, who is a Vice President at Apgeo and Principal in Charge of this project, Priya Sinkalia, who is a project manager, and Bob Scarmedelia from RLS Demographics, who's also part of this project and will provide a demographic update in terms of our enrollment in community as well. So at this point, I guess I would turn it right over to Kate and Priya and Bob.
Thank you so much, Patrick. Is Brian, are you going to bring up a slide?
Yes. I'm ready.
I should say, while that is happening, this update this evening is an update on the project, redistricting project process and demographic update. There are no specific recommendations to the school committee tonight, but you will see those on your January 6th meeting. So all of this is really a summarization of the process, the project work to date, and then, again, leading to specific recommendations, which you'll see at your January 6th meeting as an initial piece. And they'll also talk about the decision-making timeline as part of their project. I see it up now. So I'll turn it back to them.
Yeah. Thank you again, Patrick. I would probably be going back at you for a couple of these slides, but let's get started. So we're going to go over, talking to Jackson, and I will have Patrick talk about the project background and the school committee guiding principles, which all of you have decided on. And then I'll get into the redistricting and demographic process and workflow, just guiding you through how we do this, the redistricting. And then I will bring Bob Scarmedelia in, who will talk a little bit more in detail about demographics, and also have some maps to show you on student distribution. And then finally, just show you what the timeline looks like and where we are at in the timeline. So I just want to highlight that the redistricting team has been really active, just like Patrick said, you know, we started early and had to take a little bit of a break because of COVID, but we picked right back up and have made really good progress on the project. We've got, you know, the two school committee representatives on the team, as also, you know, Shrewsbury Public School staff, which each, each one of them has been really important on the committee and brought really great insights into the process. And, you know, I think all of us at Apgeo and Bob have been very appreciative of that. Next slide. We also have our student representatives from each school, including the early retirement centers. So that's also been great, because we get that student perspective. We get, you know, we share with them what, you know, what we're seeing in the data, and just a very, you know, clear process on how the, you know, the project is progressing. And as far as we are concerned, Kate, myself, and I have another colleague, Ashley, who has been, you know, the primary people working- who has been, you know, the primary people working on the project, as also Bob, who works with us on the demographics. So I just want to give you some detail about AppGeo. We've been, you know, in the business for over 25 years now, doing geospatial, helping everybody with geospatial solutions, be it local government, private entities, state level. But we also have been doing these school redistricting projects, and Kate and I have been working on these for a while now. And we bring to these projects not just our geospatial expertise, but being parents of children in Massachusetts schools, we identify with the problems and we identify with the situations that, you know, everybody is in when it comes to redistricting. So I think you bring that lens to it, which has been helpful in the process. We've worked with Lexington, Newton, Verica, Weymouth, just to name a few. In fact, with Lexington, we did two phases of a project with two rounds of it. So it is, and all of these projects have given us that experience to make the Shrewsbury project run really smoothly. And I'd also like to introduce, next slide, Bob Scarredelia, who is, who comes to us with a lot of experience. He's been the chief demographic officer for the state of New York. He's an adjunct professor at SUNY in Albany, and is really heavily involved with the census process and has authored a number of books, including Aging in America, which just came out with its, I don't know, fourth edition? We can talk to that. But he is also adept at producing local area population projections, and that's what he has done for this project as well. And he will get into a little more detail about his work and the work that he's done in Shrewsbury. Next slide. So I'm actually going to hand it, Patrick, if you're okay with handling the next few slides.
Sure. And I won't take up a lot of time on these. I think folks are really familiar with this stuff about, in terms of our goals and objectives, which is first, replacing the current Beal Early Childhood Center, which is, again, approximately 100 years old, with a new 790-seat school, K through 12, excuse me, K through four configuration, as part of this whole process in terms of realigning our grade configuration. And that vote's already been taken, of course. And as part of this, really, you know, when you build a new school, what we want to try to shore up is to make sure that it's not just one group of students who go to that school that benefit, if you will, but that everybody in that grade span has a so-called parity of school spaces. So part and parcel of this whole plan from the very beginning has been to draw down the enrollment at the existing elementary schools and repurpose some of the classroom spaces for dedicated purposes for music, art, special education, English language learner, so that when we reopen next fall, that we have dedicated spaces at Patton, Spring, Coolidge, and Floral for all of those services, just like we will at the new school. And that's what I mean by this kind of parity of space allocations. Certainly not going to be the same, not going to be the same vintage, but we're going to have similar types of space allocation so that students get the same educational experience regardless of where you go to school. Next slide. Again, you know, why do we need this? We've been, we've got some pretty significant enrollment growth, of course, in history of Shrewsbury in the past couple of decades. We've had overcrowded elementary schools and added modular classrooms onto those schools. When you add modular classrooms onto a school but don't change any of the core facilities, it adds pressure. You know, the choke points are, you know, your common areas, like your food service, your cafeteria, your gymnasium, your music areas. Now you just have a larger population to schedule everybody through those singular spaces, and it makes for an uncomfortable environment. You know, certainly, again, one of the primary purposes was providing universal full-day kindergarten for all of our students, which is an experience that over 95% of Massachusetts kindergarten students have right now. We have not been able to offer that due to a lack of space. When we open up this school, we're going to be able to offer that, and it will be tuition-free. Also, part of this project, we want to make sure that if we've got known housing developments, that we're planning for those. The two that we know of right now that are in the pipeline, Edgemere on Route 20 is very much, you know, in the construction phase, if you will. And then the point at Hills Farms is still a plan on paper, but would have a significant impact going forward. And so that's why we've got this new Beal school under construction. And then this slide, and I won't go through all the details, but basically is kind of an underpinning of the redistricting plan, which is to say, you know, on the left side, if you take your current configuration of schools and enrollments, and then on the right side, on the bottom right, you can see a planned enrollment K through four of 2,322 students, which is the MSBA enrollment projection in the year 2025 and thereafter, that this is how we would like to plan for our K through four enrollment distribution across all of the schools, including the new Beal. And so that's kind of the underpinning, if you will, or a basic building block of how we're setting up our new redistricting or elementary zones. And with that, I'll turn it back to Priya on guiding. Well, actually, I can handle this too, if you'd like, and I won't take a lot of time because this is something school committee is very familiar, which is the guiding principles. And I don't think it's really worthwhile to read all these slides to folks, but rather than speak to the topic, which is, you know, what's most important? What are some of the guideposts that we want to be thinking about? And you wanted the redistricting committee to be thinking about in terms of putting together a variety of options for you to see and then ultimately decide upon. And some of these guiding principles, you know, for example, like emphasizing neighborhood school approach, which is another way of saying proximity of one's home to school and walkability and ease of transportation, as opposed to, you know, minimizing change. And I think it was really, you know, a really clear, simple way to talk about, you know, the guiding principle of minimizing change for students is interesting in that we're going to open up a new school that has a capacity for 790 students. We won't have that many at the outset. You know, I'm sure it will be 600 or so, but every child that goes to that new school is going to have a school change. So there's at least over 600 kids that are going to be changing schools. And that was something that Mr. Mayby, you know, pointed out last night at our redistricting committee meeting. So, you know, what we don't want to do is have every child have to change schools, but we want to try to minimize change. It's an important thing for parents. It's an important thing for students. You know, another piece of this guiding principles was considering student demographics, you know, ethnic and socioeconomic diversity. And we do definitely have some disparities across our elementary schools, and so that was another guiding principle. You know, can we do something, can we come up with some options that might help better balance that? And some of these things, of course, when you look at them, work in opposition to one another. So we cannot achieve all of these perfectly. And, you know, our job as a redistricting committee is to bring to you some options and then try to present to you, as part of those options, what some of the pros and cons are, if you will, in terms of meeting these guiding principles. And it will be certainly, you know, a judgment call at the end of the day, but these are the guideposts that we're working with. So that's the guiding principles. We talk about those a lot as part of our redistricting committee meetings. And at this point, I'm going to turn it now back over to Priya.
Thank you so much, Patrick. This was great. It was a good setup for me. You know, those guiding principles are really, you know, the backbone of this, but how do we get there? And the first step is gathering data and analyzing it. So we, you know, first step, got all the data that we could from both the school district as well as the town GIS, which was helpful in getting us as much as data as possible, including parcels and any background data that they had on the town. And then, of course, with the student data, we geocoded each of the students' locations, and that is really helpful. That has been the basis of how we've done a lot of this analysis. We've also collected information on plant development, you know, where, you know, what parcels have been sold, what the sales history. We've looked at land use, we've looked at student demographics, and all of this is in math and taken into consideration when we've been building our scenarios and, you know, analyzing all the data and trying to pull it all together and make sense of it. So this is the first step that's taken and the basis of everything. Next slide. The next step is component building, and this is a really key piece of the process, where what we do is we create these discrete areas within the town, and then both of what is used as building blocks to build the scenarios that we will be presenting to you the next meeting. And these are, you know, as you can see in the map, they're all color-coded based on the school that they're currently assigned to. And then we work collaboratively while building them, not just, you know, this was us building them at the first shot, but then everybody in the committee had and inserted some sort of community. These areas might make sense to create components out of. The next slide will give you a little more detail on what these look like. And so when we build them, we are very careful about the neighborhoods and making sure that the components were built such that the lines were defined a parcel and not dividing a street out so that, you know, we don't want one side of the street, you know, the other side to be a different district, except of course, if it's a really major street. But, you know, this gives you a little sense of what those components look like in different parts of the town. The next step is, of course, scenario building. And what we do is we take those components that I just showed you and we move them around. And then, you know, as we can see, there's some examples from Wesley and Verica that, you know, where we presented options to both the redistricting committee and the school committee eventually. And we give them, we present the scenario with all the information that we can in the context of that scenario. So given this scenario, what's going to change? What is going to be the grade breakdown? How are the, what's the target enrollment going to be? And, you know, what is the demographic going to be? The demographic change if you implement this scenario? So all that information is presented to the committee, and that's what you would use to evaluate it. So as you can see in that example, in Verica, we've given them the information about, you know, total capacity, what's the spend capacity, the capacity of modulars, because that's what they had, and then, you know, the spend of income. So you just sort of look at all of this information, and that is what is used for next slide's evaluation. So we use the guiding principles that Patrick just described, and those are sort of the key that lets you evaluate the pros and cons of every scenario. And we get other information like drive time, is that important? Is that something that we need to consider? How far is the student going to travel? How do we keep the neighborhoods together? How do we balance the enrollment? So all of these guiding principles are taken into consideration when we're evaluating the scenarios. Changes by grade, what's the walkability? All of these, you know, pieces are important in the process. And so as we do this, we also want to keep in mind the projection, and that's another key piece, which I will hand over to Bob to talk about in a minute. But because we are using current locations of students as we do our analysis, we need to have a sense of what's it going to be like in 10 years. So that's where the projections come in, and we use those projections, and they are generated by looking at historic enrollment, at fertility and migration, and that is what becomes the basis of a projection model, and that is what Bob then uses to create his projections. The other elements that feed into the district projections, the regional trends, what's the development potential in town, and also you could look at local census and turnover. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to hand it over to Bob, who will talk more about the district projections and demographics and how he does work. And then I will inform you a little more about the development potentials that are in town and local census and turnover. Bob?
Bobby, I think you've unmuted, Bob.
How about now? Anyhow?
Yes.
Yes.
Good.
Okay. Okay. So my background in this process is to develop the enrollment projections. And as my background as a demographer, I bring two different models together in this process. So the one historic, one looks at historical enrollment, is a pretty standard, what's called growing progression ratio method of projection. And I'll explain this in a bit more detail, but it basically looks at what the ratio is between second graders to first graders, third graders to second graders, and uses that ratio to forecast future populations by class. But we also, an important component of that is to link with demographic data and patterns of fertility and migration portion of this model does. It's important in the projections to understand the interaction between economic and demographic forces, the structure of the population, in particular, women of childbearing age, because that's where fertility comes in and generation of births. So those components that I want to talk about in a minute are analyzed at townwide level. And then this process breaks those apart into individual schools and grades. So what is somewhat unique about the method that we employ here is the immigration of the demographic processes of change with the standard growing production ratio method to develop the most important variable being births. In doing that, we look at regional trends, as Priya mentioned. I've run the model for Worcester County as a whole, so I can have that as a basis of comparison, looked at the Metropolitan Area Planning Council projections, regional projections for Eastern Massachusetts as part of the input. So there's a variety of additional data elements that go into the whole process. So the next slide. So as Priya mentioned, in terms of the geography and student data, this effort is very data-intensive also. And so this gives you a look at various data inputs and outputs from each of the pieces of the model. So it starts out with an analysis of what's called the components of change, and that's basically births, deaths, and migration. That's how population of any community changes. And so we start with census populations. We look at birth by age of mother because that's the important piece in developing fertility rates. And we use historical data from the Massachusetts Department of Health on total births by year for the town of Shrewsbury, and also deaths by age. Now, in this model, deaths are not as important, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about that. We're talking about younger population where mortality is relatively low and doesn't have a large impact on the school population. The data outputs are important. Those survival rates come from the mortality data, but those are used to develop migration estimates. Simply, if I know how many five-to-nine-year-olds there are in the 2010 census, I can look at mortality and expect a certain number of 15- to 19-year-olds in the 2020 census. And the difference between my expected number and the actual observed number gives me an estimate of migration, either in or out migration. So those survival rates do play an important part in the migration model. But the last four elements, the fertility patterns, total fertility rate, migration patterns, and crude migration rate, those are the critical demographic drivers in developing the population projections. Now those feed into this population Now those feed into this population projection model. So the inputs reflect those outputs from the components of change. And we output the one that is most important here is the projected number of births. In order to get to that, we need the fertility rates and women of childbearing age. But those births is what then feeds into the enrollment projections model. Keep in mind, we have enrollment by grade and the grade progression ratios will move those existing enrollees up each year at, at each grade. But who are the new students coming into the system? Those are births. And so that, uh, birth history, based on, uh, the historical Department of Health data, coupled with the projected births, gives us that, uh, those new students who will be coming into school, uh, in the kindergarten five years after their birth. Next slide. So I'm gonna go through a couple of these things pretty quickly because it's the enrollment projections that you're most interested in. But this, the graphic on the left is an age pattern of fertility. And you can tell you that these age patterns of fertility are relatively stable. And you can pretty easily see how the peak in Shrewsbury is among the 30 to 44-year-old population. Now, if we went back a decade or two, we'd see that number a little bit lower in the 25 to 29, a little bit higher. But there's been a shift. And probably most of our folks are familiar with how this generation and the previous generation have delayed marriage and delayed childbearing. And that's what's reflected in this graphic, the delayed childbearing. Teen pregnancy is very low. Teen births are very low. And the 20 to 24, very low. And an area that has a significant, uh, college population. And that works to keep fertility rates down. But after that, once you get into family formation ages, those are pride fertility ages. The, uh, graphic to the right shows you the historical data on actual births and the trend for projected births that become students in Shrewsbury. Now, I'll show you this, uh, taken with the bottom because that age pattern is controlled by what's called the total fertility rate. Total fertility rate, uh, is a number that you may be familiar with, the number 2.1. And that is what's called the placement level of fertility. In other words, an average woman needs to have 2.1 children to replace her, herself, spouse, and account for, uh, those who have no children. And you can see that Shrewsbury's fertility rate is well below that replacement level, as is the United States as a whole. And many, uh, developed countries are in the 1.3, 1.5. So you can see here the, uh, 2010 to 15 and 15 to 20, uh, based primarily on historical data. And that number, it stays low for the first period, partially driven by what we're learning about COVID, fertility rates and births, you know, the current time, uh, have dropped. But then we expect some recovery, uh, throughout the projection period. Excellent. Women of child, um, one of the graphics didn't show up. Um, there it is. No, there it is. Great, thank you. So the graphic on the left represents the analysis of age-specific migration. And if you look at the, uh, pinkish and bluish lines, you're gonna see they're pretty dark and erratic. And that's because the five-year data, uh, migration data simply is not all that great. And we're estimating that in five-year periods. But the dark gray line is what you should pay attention to because that represents the average of those two time periods, uh, 2010 to 15 and 15 to 20. And it also represents some smoothing to eliminate a lot of the noise in the five-year data. Surprisingly, these patterns are very stable over time. And by stable, I mean that if we went back a decade, we'd see a very similar pattern. If we went back two decades, we'd see a very similar pattern. These tend to be more tied to community characteristics than economic, um, factors. Economic factors come into, into play when I, when I described this table of crude migration rate. The crude migration rate defines the total number of in-or-out migrants, but it's applied to that pattern. So you can see in looking at this pattern, the ages between the mid twenties to the late forties are positive in migration rates. If I were to, uh, assume and specify an input of 10% migration in a five-year period, that whole graphic would be moved up the scale. And I would be generating more immigrants in each age category. So that's really important. That's the, that's the piece that really drives women of childbearing age. And you can see that trend in the graphic on the right. Excellent. Oh, uh, this is a quick summary of the projection model. This is the demographic cohort component model. And you can see that it is expecting, given those migration rates and fertility rates, an increase in population for the town out to 2040. Now, for the enrollment projections, we're only going to 2030. But the model, uh, continues and it's a, a standard 30-year model. Female population is expected to continue to increase. The females of childbearing age are expected to increase, as are the total number of births. And that birth, those numbers of births is what's going to drive kindergarten and first grade enrollment in, in the model and in the future. And these are the townwide numbers. Uh, next one. So I'm just a simple graphic to look at the year-to-year, uh, enrollment increase. There's been, uh, some slight enrollment decline in the last few years. And that's expected to continue for a year or so. And then you see those births and increased fertility rates kicking in and increases in enrollment through the rest of the projection period. Excellent. So that was, I think, kind of the details. So that was all background in order to generate the, uh, numbers that's at the top, top row of this slide. Current enrollment and births. Uh, so you look at the current enrollment, current births as 2010, 319, the increase, a big increase to 374, and then declining to 2015. And what the grade progression ratio method does is measure the actual enrollment to the expected students coming in. So in 2010, it's typically the ratio, the, the number at the bottom, 1.113, is simply the ratio between the kindergarteners, 355, divided by the births five years earlier, 319. And that same calculation is done for each of the, uh, periods in grades. So we have existing kindergarteners in, uh, fall of 16, 388. And we have the number of first graders in fall of 2017 as 424. That ratio yields the grade progression of 1.093. And so that same method is done to generate these ratios for each year-to-year and grade-to-grade. Now, there's typically a variation in that. And so it's, uh, the standard method is to average three years, sometimes five years. Um, but these rates are relatively stable. And a three-year average, uh, works pretty well. And so that's what you see under that three-year average column. Now, the Shrewsbury, and this comes from our conversations with the, uh, committee. The Shrewsbury, as, as Pat mentioned earlier, was, uh, going to be offering full, uh, full-day kindergarten, which it hasn't in the past. And so there's been, uh, a need to increase the grade progression for births becoming kindergarteners because of that increase. And so that's what has been added into the model, uh, basically by a 15% increase into the model to account for that increased movement of births to kindergarten. And that will then be reflected throughout the rest of the projections. Next, next slide, please. And so this is one of the, you probably wanna look at. But this gives you the entire series of projections, uh, that we've developed. And again, just to, to reiterate, this example is with Floral, uh, school and shows that same progression rate from births to, um, grade one. And the grade progression ratios now. The births that were generated by the projection model are at a town level. This is, this is a data limitation. We simply don't have the data to be able to do this individually at the school level. And so this, uh, row that you can see is like what highlighted in the dark blue for Floral. This is an example of what we've done for each school. And it's simply based on the proportion of total, uh, district enrollment in each school. So Floral's, uh, enrollment proportion of the district is about 44%. And so 44% of the total births is allocated to Floral. And that's the same for each of the other schools. And this example simply walks through the entire process for Floral. And, uh, again, I'm not sure I need to go through all of the data. I'm happy to describe it more if necessary. But at the bottom, the grade progression fingers you can see are year-to-year based on the actual enrollment and then the three-year average. And that three-year average is then applied to the enrollment data to move each grade forward. So grade one in fall of 2021 is, well, let me move back first. Births in Floral in 2014 would become first graders in 2020. And that's the 195. And then that number is applied to the grade progression ratio to generate the next grade. So births from 156 gets applied to the 1.1, um, I'm sorry, 146, it's applied to the progression ratio of 1.236 to generate 175 first graders. The 195 first graders gets applied to the ratio 1.011 to generate a slight increase to 197. And that process is just iterative. It goes through year by year, moving births into first grade, first graders into second grader, and so on. And the total, once we've done it for each of the, uh, individual schools, the total enrollment that you saw earlier is simply the sum across all of the, uh, schools and grade categories to yield the total enrollment by grade and by year out to fall of 2030. And I think that's about all I have.
Yeah. And thank you so much, Bob. I, I don't know, uh, Patrick, if you, uh, should, does anybody in the committee have questions at this point? Because that was a lot to take in.
We're, we're good.
Okay. Um, okay, so, um, I, I, I'll move on. And, you know, what, what Bob has just, um, explained to you is what will then be used, um, uh, and, and, you know, what we would do is we take that projection number and apply it to each component using the current location of the students and, you know, essentially proportion it. And then use that to, um, come up with our projections that are in the scenario. And I'll describe that in more detail when we present the scenarios for you the next time. Um, and hopefully we are a bit clear that it is a lot to factor head around. Um, so I just wanna quickly touch on some of the other factors that are influencing redistricting. Um, one of the, uh, main ones is development potential. Um, and we spent a little bit of time, you know, speaking with the planner, looking at, you know, uh, performance that have been issued. Um, and just trying to get a sense of what is the development potential in town and should we be considering that for, um, any of these, uh, projections that we've been looking at? Uh, the, the, what we found is that, uh, from, from the information that we could gather, that there really is no significant development planned in town. Uh, most of this future planning, if you look at the master plan as well, is focused on, um, senior and affordable housing. Um, it seems like multiple large subdivisions, which were, you know, 100 homes, um, and larger, were built in the 90s and medieval in the 2000s. And that's pretty much done. There are no large lots for that kind of development to come in. Um, there are just a handful of the, um, subdivisions with tiny sort of three to five single-family homes coming in. Um, and the other factor that is influencing all of this is sewer access. And there is a, um, cap, um, in the amount of, of volume that can be sent to the electoral plan. And so that is also, uh, restricting, uh, you know, uh, how much development can go in. Uh, the Route 20 over there, other league allows for some extension. But there again, you need, uh, at least a 20-acre lot. And so in the case of the Edgemea development, um, they, you know, got lucky with the, with combining a few lots. And so they were able to put that development in. Um, so that's another factor. And then there just isn't that much land available which is developable because, um, it's restricted by weapons and other constraints that don't allow, um, the, the development to come in. Um, next slide. So what we did was we actually looked at, um, assessor data and how that's been coded for, um, land use classification. And so, uh, the assessor data actually has codes for is it developable or not? Um, it's actually a code for each, uh, land classification. So within commercial, within residential, there's a code for redevelopable land. Uh, and so we plotted that and we plotted that in comparison on, in the context of the zoning for those, for those parcels. And I reviewed this with the planner and we sort of, you know, looked at each, um, parcel individually to see what was going on. And, you know, that's where, that summary that I just presented to you, um, comes a lot from discussions with, um, the planner and looking at this data. Uh, the next slide. Uh, what we came up with were, um, again, a handful of, of land developments coming in. Of course, the major two are, um, Edgemea Crossing and, uh, Point at Hills Farm. Edgemea Crossing being already on board and Point at Hills Farm still not, not in the, in the, uh, building phase yet. Um, that's still in the pipeline. Um, but there are other potential developments, you know, which we've plotted across here. Um, and again, varying potential, but not very large, except for maybe the 335 Maple Avenue, um, development, which could become a mixed-use development with some, um, residential units in it. Uh, so this is what we are using as our, um, guide when we build the scenario so that, um, you know, planning for the number of students that might be generated in these, uh, in these developments. Again, it's not, at least all of the other developments except for Edgemea, Point at Hills Farm, and maybe 335 Maple Avenue, there isn't any major student generation that's going to, is that expected. Uh, we also looked at census data that, uh, that the town provided, um, with the, uh, the town clerk has that data and that was provided to us. Uh, we plotted it, we, um, we geocoded those, that data essentially. And then we tried to say, okay, you know, what can we do with this? And, um, it was definitely challenging. Uh, we were trying to see whether we could look at the age distribution. We looked at, you know, the premises, where are they? And how is it going to change? We don't necessarily know what's going to happen. Uh, we tried to plot it by, you know, single-family homes, the, you know, the ages of the, of the owners. Uh, but I think what we found by looking at this map is that this seems to be, uh, a, a general pattern where, um, you know, houses turn over, but then that all these replacements with, you know, there might be some that become, um, uh, you know, empty nesters. So there's, there's a balance of both happening. So we really couldn't come up with anything, um, concrete that we could say that, okay, there's going to be that much turnover that's going to cause a lot of student generation. Um, so, um, next slide. Um, that's it. So I think what we, we came up with was it, it was going to be Bob's, um, numbers from the, um, from his study of fertility and migration and his student projection model, which is going to be our basis for all the scenarios that we build and looking at the numbers from that perspective. And of course, keeping in mind the developments that are expected and planning for those when we build the scenario. I just have a few slides to show you of the current distribution quickly if we can run through these, these are current districts and what the breakdown K through four students is. The next slide has, we've also looked at the racial and ethnic distribution. And, you know, we use this data in our scenarios as well so that when the new lines are drawn, we can see what the breakdown of that distribution is. Next slide. We also looked at income distribution based on the percent free and reduced lunch data that is in the student enrollment information. And we've been very cognizant of this data when we're building the scenarios to make sure that we would think about equity when we're creating them. And also the special education distribution. And as you can see, that pretty much is, you know, is equal across the board. So those are all the, yeah, then this is the English language learning distribution as well. So that is sort of a quick run-through of all the data that we gathered and we mapped so that we can use that even in the scenarios. Just to look at this timeline and next steps. As Patrick mentioned as well, we started this project in March. We had to do a little bit of a hiatus because of COVID, but we picked right up. October through November, we've been, you know, building these components and doing the demographic studying. We've incorporated the population projection into our scenario building process. We presented a variation of this presentation to the public so that they are familiar with the process as well and this presentation as well. And forthcoming will be the actual scenarios. We will present options to you to consider and to the community to consider. Give us feedback, but then we can go back as a committee and the committee and address all the concerns. And then finally, the school committee vote on the 10th of February and March through June, of course, will be the implementation of the scenario that's been put on. So I believe we are doing the continuing to do the, of course, the continuing of scenario building. And we have a public forum on the 12th of Jan. But before that, we will be meeting with you again. So any questions are welcome.
Any questions or comments?
Lindsay. There is just so much work here that you have done. I think it's going to be exciting for you to share more with the community and for them to hear back. But the, I'm just so impressed with the depth and thoroughness that has undergone this process. And I think I mostly followed along with the ratios of births to first graders, but, and feel like we're understanding. But also just knowing that we're taking cuts and slices of the data to really reinforce what we know is important, right? That we're, you're structuring your analysis really based upon those principles that we gave you in terms of walkable schools or in terms of, you know, equity and demographics. And so you just really can feel the partnership, both between the work that you're doing, but also what we've laid out is really important for our community. So I'm just very appreciative and appreciative with what you've managed to get done during a pandemic and really keep us on time because this is an important project for us. So thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments?
Just, I think what surprised me the most about this in the last month and a half is how thorough the process really is sitting in these, you know, committee meetings. And at the speed that AppGeo is able to help us, you know, just guide us through a very complex process with the technology that they're using, I think saves us a lot of time from an administrative standpoint. I know from the last time that we did this, 23 years ago, the technology has changed quite a bit and it's helped us tremendously to just talk things through. And I really appreciate the work that they're doing. They've become a really critical partner and success for this process. And also a big thank you to the committee, the parents that represent each of the elementary schools and our principals and administrators on these meetings. It's been very productive.
I definitely want to echo that with the parents who are serving. This is, I think, a really good working group. A lot of input, a lot of feedback, because it's, there's a lot that, you know, we may sit here as school committee members, but they're kind of living, breathing it in their community. So I found it extremely helpful to have this parent input as well as the principals who are serving with us. It's just tremendously helpful. And then AppGeo's consultants helping us like mesh this all together. I've learned things that, you know, like looking at quadrants and moving things and how this all works, it's a pretty, it's a very detailed process, but it's now making more sense as we dig deeper into it. So I want to thank our consultants. It's a very helpful process. I know, Mr. Collins, you had your hand up.
I just wanted to make a couple of quick follow-up points that might lead into the January 6th presentation. And those would be first, that as everybody knows, I think that we have become a very racially diverse school, community and larger community. In fact, I was just looking at statistics from the Department of Education. And I think this is the first year that our student population, in terms of white students, is below 50%. We're at 49% now white and about 51% non-white. So we're very racially diverse across all of our schools. And, you know, that doesn't necessarily seem to be, you know, quite a challenge in terms of developing these elementary zones. You know, conversely, I would say that the distribution of students on free and reduced lunch is certainly more concentrated in the Coolidge district right now. And Coolidge, those neighborhoods most closely associated with Coolidge School. And so, you know, I think our aspiration is to bring a variety of options to the school committee to look at and one that tries to do the best job we can to try to even that out, but that's going to be a challenge. And I guess the last point that I wanted to make is that, you know, these apartment complexes, Edgemere Crossing, Hills Point, you know, we looked at and we are planning for the student yield, if you will. The town manager and the project developers each have to provide a kind of a community impact report. And based upon both of those pieces of work, you know, it's expected that Edgemere is going to yield somewhere between 19 and 34 students total. And in the K-4 range, you know, it would be, you know, half a dozen to a dozen students. And the reason for that is, is that the type of apartments that are being constructed there are, lots of them are studios in one bedroom. And again, a little bit differently at Hills Point right now. Still about the same amount of units total, about 250, but with more, greater distribution of some two-bedroom and three-bedroom. The student yield there is about 60 to 84. So we think K-4, about a third of that, about 20 to 30 students. So, you know, the options that we're looking at, you know, where we're thinking that those apartment complexes would be best placed or allocated to the New Beale School, which is our largest, going to be our largest elementary school and had the most capacity. So that's just kind of another piece that's feeding into this. So I want to kind of bear out those particular things that we are very racially diverse. The socioeconomics are stratified or located, if you will, in different areas. It's difficult to smooth that out, if you will. And we are certainly planning for future growth.
Thank you. Dr. Soro, any questions or comments?
I certainly want to thank Ms. Hickey and Ms. Sankalia, Ms. Tardif from AppGeo, Mr. Scardamalia from the RLS demographics around the demographic information. This is a lot of dense information. And obviously, we'll post the slide deck on our website tomorrow. People can feel free to look through that and get a more up-close look on their own computer or screen when they're interested in doing so. I do think the community can have a high degree of faith that this has been a very thorough process. I would concur with the committee that the parent representatives have been outstanding in terms of their feedback and input. Our two principals, Ms. Austrianer from Coolidge, Mr. Maybe from Spring Street, also made great contributions. And I really, of course, Ms. Fritz and Mr. Wensky represented the school committee. And we're very indebted to Mr. Collins for the way that he is shepherding this project forward during a year when obviously there are tremendous demands on his time relative to all the logistics going on with the pandemic. But this is a critically important project and I'm really pleased with the way it's moving forward. And I'm looking forward to January when more specific solutions will be outlined, the potential solutions. And then ultimately, a recommendation from the committee will be made. Again, this is not a situation where everyone is going to be happy with the recommendation because we know people love their schools and people are not going to want to move in many cases. It's going to be necessary, of course, to balance out the enrollment across the elementary school districts, but it's for a good reason. And I'm very confident ultimately, our kids are resilient and ultimately will be, have a better situation for kids in terms of having adequate space across all of our elementary schools. And of course, replacing the 100-year-old Beale with a state-of-the-art new school that will serve us well for decades to come. So again, really thank you for the presentation and the level of detail. And this project is going very well from my perspective.
Thank you. And I think it bears repeating, two very important dates, January 6th and January 12th, for the school committee to hear options and recommendations and then have community input at the forum on the 12th. So thank you for joining us and we'll see you on the 6th and we make another go at this. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Next on the agenda, under Finance and Operations, it's a recommendation for a one-to-one iPad deployment for grades K through four. In response to the COVID pandemic, the district has expanded the existing five through 12 one-to-one iPad program to all students in kindergarten through grade four to facilitate remote and hybrid learning. This is done in combination with federal COVID grant funding and reuse of existing older devices. And tonight, Mr. LaRue and Ms. Clouder will make a recommendation that the district continue to provide iPads to students in kindergarten through grade four into our future years.
So thank you. Yes, as you mentioned, students, you raised your hand a lot providing iPads on a one-to-one basis. And we did expand that access through the pandemic to students in grades K through four for this school year. That was done using the combination of devices purchased with COVID grant funding for grades three and four. And through a reallocation of existing devices for grades K to two, some devices that were either in classrooms, on carts, or that had been turned in by graduating seniors from the class of 2020 or students who were moving from grade eight to grade nine and receiving a new iPad at that point for their high school career. As part of, as this has played out, we've gotten some feedback from teachers that some benefits to the iPads being in the elementary classrooms or at the elementary level is, one, is increased technology confidence for teachers. And that's come from not only having iPads available to students, but also just being kind of thrown into the mode of teaching remotely. So that was something we had seen a few times in the feedback from teachers. So that would bode well for being able to leverage that knowledge to kind of take advantage of the iPads moving forward. Students can practice at home using some tools that we've purchased, like Freckle, ST Math, as well as other tools that teachers may be selecting on their own. It also allows us to provide additional supports for students of special needs. The iPads have a lot of assistive technology features that are kind of built in. And having that available for every student kind of reduces the friction in terms of making that available to all students, even for maybe small accommodations that may be needed in certain cases. And also, students can submit evidence of the work they've done using manipulatives, using photos. But also, one comment that we received is that it enables equitable access to digital books in cases where students may not have access at home. And that includes the SOAR app that the media centers have recently purchased that will help facilitate that as well. One of the things that kind of happens with shared iPads is that time has to be spent logging in, logging out of the iPads, kind of managing groupings and who uses what, where the work is and that kind of thing. So less time would be spent doing that and teachers would have more flexibility in terms of their grouping in the classroom. One of the concerns that was expressed, that has been expressed, is over screen time, especially for younger students. One thing that we do want to kind of make sure that everybody's aware of is that, you know, we would consider the iPads as being one tool among many and that screen time would likely be significantly reduced after the pandemic when it's no longer the main vehicle for proceeding instruction, basically. So our recommendation at this point is to continue to provide one-to-one access to iPads for K to four students after the school year. And we do have an opportunity, given the timing of the Beale Building Project, to actually purchase iPads for the Beale students using project funding, using FFDE funding. So that would kind of help blunt some of the impact on the appropriate budget. And to also help kind of make the impact a little bit less, we're proposing to purchase for two grade levels for each of the next two years. For next year, it'll be grades one and three. And in the following year, grades K and one. And then starting with the 2023 to 2024 school year, we would then purchase for kindergarten every year and they would use those iPads for the five years of their elementary life. And so the short-term impact financially would be reduced by an offset. We've originally been planning on having a five-year placement cycle for our non-one-to-one iPads, including elementary carts, shared iPads in classrooms, special education iPads, those sorts of uses, as well as staff iPads. So moving to this model will reduce that pool of non-one-to-one iPads that we'd have to replace using the funding. So there's an offset there in terms of the initial impact. We would be using four-year leases as we've been using SOAR in the one-to-one program. So the FY 2022 impact would be about $27,000. And that includes the offset from Beale. So that doesn't include the impact of Beale, basically. It's reduced because of Beale, basically, as numbers translate. And then because of the timing that we've kind of had with the iPads that we've repurposed and that kind of thing, we won't really get to a steady state until FY 27. And at that point, it'll be about, an impact of about $132,000 per year. And with that, I'll take any questions that the committee may have.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments?
I'm very, very much supportive of this initiative because as a parent of an elementary school student, as you talk about both the teacher's ability to become more and more comfortable, but also our students. And I noticed my daughter the other day now submits all of her homework assignments, maybe to the chagrin of her teacher, but adds a voice note on top of it to explain what she's submitting. And eight months ago, she wouldn't have known what a voice note is, let alone how to submit it and where we are going. And using this opportunity during a pandemic to actually be able to achieve one of our strategic priorities at the same time is pretty remarkable. And maybe not where we would have prioritized, were we not, had we not gone through this pandemic, but taking advantage of that. And in addition, being able to offset some of the additional capital expenses through the Beale Building Project, it seems like a win-win, you know? And of course, of course, I appreciate the concern about screen time and parents having to manage that. And I assume as a district, we'll continue to sort of help parents think about what some guiding principles might be for at home and how to manage those things. But as kids get older too, in my house, I've certainly found that the iPads are no longer seen as a video game console. That's something else. And so, you know, they put those down when the day is over and they're using them really for school. And so that might not be true in every family. I think it's important we keep an eye on that. But it seems like this is the direction for us to move as a community is that devices are essential for learning too. So I'm very supportive and I think it's important that we continue to find the resources necessary to ensure that both teachers and our students have the technology necessary to advance in sort of this day and age.
Jason.
I also support this. Something that one of the clear outcomes from this pandemic is that we are rapidly accelerating the pace in which technology is going to be necessary to access just about any facet of life. And at a younger age, it's probably going to be more and more true that to access more and more new and exciting content being created. and more new and exciting content being created, we're going to need our youngest learners to be perhaps a bit more tech savvy than we would have thought we would have needed them to be a few years ago. So I also am in support of this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm very supportive of this. I think we've all seen what iPads can do since inception with the Sherwood project. I think there's something similar done there. We also know the impact of iPads in the climate that we sit right now and think about if we didn't have them. Accessibility is important, certainly. I am curious, Brian, from your perspective, I know all I can think about is your team and the, you know, the tickets that you're managing day to day, especially as we're remote and adding additional devices, and we've already essentially done it this year, right? So looking ahead, when we all go back to school, do you see any bandwidth issues from your team's perspective in managing these devices?
I'd say the additional staff that we have this year will definitely be helpful toward that end, and it's something that we'll definitely have to kind of keep an eye on, but I think we'll be in a good position. We've kind of seen how it plays out to start, and I guess it's not everybody in the building at the same time, but I think we're in a good position to be able to move forward. We'll look forward to that.
Good training now.
Right.
Great, thank you so much.
Sure.
I think it's one of the outcomes of the pandemic that we've all had to deal with use of technology and kind of saying, well, why didn't we do that way before we had it? But we weren't forced to use it that way. So I think this is another example of even our younger students are able to use technology for educational purposes in a positive way, and like Lindsay said, things that they probably never would have even thought, but they're going to be that much further ahead, because this technology piece is going to continue to grow, and it's not, we're not going to go back to what we were doing pre-pandemic. So I'm fully in support of it, the fact that it can be offset through some of the dollars coming in with the new Beal school. And as we move into our own budget cycle and discussions, to me, this is something that would be a priority. It's not a big-ticket item per se, but it definitely, to me, is a priority item as we move forward.
Dr. Soro, any comments or questions?
I certainly want to thank Mr. LaRue for his forward-thinking strategically about this. I want to thank Ms. Clouter, the elementary principals, and then ultimately, the feedback we also got from the elementary educators relative to how this was working. You know, everyone's alluded to the fact that the pandemic has provided some opportunities along these lines. I think, you know, it's essentially provided proof of concept that this is something that will, can work well for our students. When I think back to when the new Sherwood was opening and we were promoting the one-to-one iPad program, and there were some questions about whether fifth graders would be able to handle bringing iPads back and forth to school safely and not losing them and breaking them, and now we have kindergartners doing it on a regular basis, you know, easy-peasy. So it's really something that has just become, this year, I think, with the hybrid model, very ingrained for kids bringing it back and forth to school, obviously using it heavily from home. I think in particular, the focus on equity in being able to make sure all of our students have access to the same kinds of digital resources, both at school and at home, is a really important feature here that makes me, I find to be, that to be very compelling. Obviously, there's the caveat of not overdoing the screen time, and I do think that, you know, instructionally, it's something that we can be thoughtful about as a tool. And with that, I would ask that, you know, if Ms. Clouter has, from her perspective, any perspective, anything to add relative to the access that she sees from her role.
Yeah, I would just echo that. I think Mr. LaRue's done a nice job of outlining in a really concise way all the different parameters to consider when, you know, thinking about the expansion. And I think from an equity standpoint, the sooner kids have access to powerful apps to both practice and then express their own thinking, as you mentioned with the voice panel, Lindsay, the better they're able to apply that as they grow. We certainly saw that as an example with digital citizenship, which used to reside at Sherwood, and then moved down to grade four, and then moved down to grade three. And so kids are grappling earlier with their own presence and footprint online, as well as kind of how they make sense of the world in the mediums that they have. That would look really different for kids of a younger span, but I think just having that awareness from the beginning is a really helpful thing. And I think the more innovative usage is not necessarily in the practice software that has been really helpful in this time. You know, the jury's out around whether we've identified the correct software and how well students are growing as a result of using that. We've seen encouraging evidence, but I think there's no doubt that as kids have access to some of the tools for communication, they can grow their own network, both within the school and then beyond, if they can use some of those tools and figure out how to kind of represent themselves and their thinking over time. So the potential for a digital portfolio, for example, that doesn't necessarily rely on software, is really compelling one to me, because it gets at some of the strategic priorities we identified in terms of project-based learning and, you know, citizenship.
Perfect, thank you. All right, well, thank you for bringing this forward, and we do not need to vote on this. This is something that will be included in the budget where we would be voting, so thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have our minutes from our meeting held on December 2nd, 2020. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, these can be marked as accepted as distributed. We do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, purpose seven, open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes, and B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit A, may have a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Roll call vote is required. Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mr. Palance?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.